At this time, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Little. Board, the rest of the night is our reports only. And we're going to start with a superintendent's update from Dr. Little, and then we're going to move into some updates on our back-to-school plans. So, Dr. Little, I'm going to let you take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As everybody remembers, we originally scheduled this meeting as a quick Human Resources update meeting, as we just need, you know, to vote on things and kind of we call it a skinny meeting, be in and out. But we also wanted to take this time tonight to, again, provide updates on where we are over two weeks. Lots of been, lots of work has been done over the last two weeks, and just keeping the board updated and providing an opportunity to ask some questions about where we are. So there's a lot going to come at you tonight, so I just wanted to go ahead and not spend too much time on my updates. So we're going to start just very quickly with some brief things, and then you'll notice we're moving into very specifically about where we are on the Online Learning Academy and some things about student safety that we want to talk about as well. So a number of things we need to, we need to just go over tonight and provide you some information. So Ms. Hill, if you would, just a quick update on where we are with communications.
So Board, Board Chair, Dr. Little, we've been busy, as you can imagine. The Stronger Together website is keeping us very busy as we create material, you know, including videos, documents, information or infographics. And we've been updating the webpage as we make changes to our plans. Over the last three months, that our homepage received 346,503 views. The Stronger Together page received 101,908 views of that. So it's by far the most active page on our website. We've created the concept of Together Talks.
101,000? Is that what you just said?
Yes, 101,908 views since we created it. We created it June the 3rd. So the, we also have created a new concept called Together Talks. There have been a lot of people that have helped with that and been involved in that, especially our star celebrity, Dr. Little.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Face made for radio is what I had.
So it has given people, what they constantly are telling me is that it gives them a feeling that they're in an intimate conversation with Dr. Little. And so the relaxed intimate conversation that he has with his guests is able to really bring people into it. So we've done four talks since July 15th. We did Employee Talk that has had 22,605 YouTube views. It's had 248 likes. The Parent Talk had 16,117 views, 291 likes, and most importantly, it had 335 Facebook shares. The Mass Chat has had 6,616 views, 97 likes, and 54 shares. The one we most recently did that explained the difference between e-learning and the Online Learning Academy had 1,819 views, 28 likes, and 49 Facebook shares. So you can see those are all active videos. We've also had a lot of increased media attention, especially about our plan as we revealed it. We've had at least 100 news articles and television reports related to school reopening. Once we released that plan, Dr. Little had to do a lot of media interviews for us, and he did them very well, many of them being about our reentry plan. You might find it interesting that those same interviews have been picked up by media in all the surrounding states, including North Carolina, Georgia, even some as far down as Florida. And I saw one in DC, it had run in DC. So it's been widely shared. So we really appreciate his willingness to do all that and his innate ability to do it well. So that's pretty much our quick update.
I just want to commend you and your staff. I've watched all of them and also gotten a ton of feedback from our parents, and it really helped answer a lot of questions, and I thought you guys did a great job because you really addressed the concerns of the community.
There's a group working behind the scenes that includes Dr. Natalie Osborne-Smith, Mary Gaskins, Kimberly Freeman, and Amy Wood. And so they've helped us craft questions and go through the questions that came in online. So while we was doing the interviews, they were going through the questions, and Catherine was involved, Catherine Fell, and they were feeding those questions to us at the end, in addition to the ones he'd already answered. So a lot of people have worked on this.
And I think those, I've also watched all of the Together Talks, and I think they've been excellent. And I think that goes to the point that we all know, and sometimes we forget, but the more information we can share, the more reassured folks are about what's happening. And we're in such a period of uncertainty and anxiety that I think Dr. Little's calming, confident communication of what Lexington One is doing has really helped our community understand that they're in good hands.
Right. He's a very relaxed interview, and that, and the fact that he is relaxed relaxes the people watching, the audience, so.
Well, there you go. Thank you very much. I hope my mom's watching tonight. That would be, she'll be very happy about that.
So he'll be available after the meeting for autographs.
Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Stacey has already shared with Human Resources. Mr. Stacey, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I got a couple of things.
Okay.
But I'm not a relaxed interviewer, so. We have done a few things. We staffed, we've been working with Howard to staff the Online Learning Academy. We continue to work with the principals to do face-to-face staffing. But one of the biggest things that we've had to deal with in the last couple of weeks, Meredith Seibert and Jennifer Berry have been extremely busy communicating with staff and teachers with respect to virtual options as they relate to their specific positions and addressing requests for accommodations. Our stance has been that we aren't working from home, that when we do the virtual option, we will do it at school. And so our goal is to try to make that space at school as safe as possible for those. That's, that's our position. And so we've had a lot of conversations, spent a lot of time on the phone with individuals to try to make that work. And we are currently working on a model with Shane Phillips and Amy Woods to try to help us determine how we're going to shift from the hybrid model to face-to-face, or from the hybrid model to virtual, some data points that would trigger that shift. And so that's in motion right now. And that's pretty much what we do every day. Thank you.
This is Jada. I have a question, Mr. Stacey. If an employee needs accommodations through ADA...
Yes, ma'am.
How would they go about getting those?
That's why Jennifer Berry and Meredith Seibert are the two that contacts for that. So what they do is they contact Jennifer Berry, and she walks them through that process. And then we, again, our first accommodation would be to try to make that space at school as safe as possible. And then beyond that, it's whatever the particular accommodation might be needed. But there is a process.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Instructional Services has been hard at work as well. So, Dr. Tally?
Thank you, Dr. Little. I would like to update the board on two areas, and then I'll ask Mr. Bissel to update you on a third. I'd like to talk to you about the fine arts and where we are with that. Our marching band programs began practice this week. Whitenow High School started yesterday. River Bluff High and Pelearon High School is next week, and Gilbert High School and Lexington High Schools start August the 17th. Orchestra typically does not hold practice over the summer, but those teachers are preparing for social distancing and safety guidelines for the classroom once we do return to school. This is the same status for the Visual Arts, Dance, Chorus, and Theater, and for Elementary Music and Arts. Dance teams will be holding practices this summer, and they'll follow, of course, the same social distancing and COVID checks as our athletes. We've worked with Mr. Salters and his team to provide PPE, to order that equipment for marching band during the summer practice, and we appreciate that collaboration. We have delayed, this is information for the board, we made the decision to delay 5th grade band and strings for first semester and start that back up in spring semester. We hope by then that COVID will be more under control than it certainly is now, and this will give our teachers an opportunity to adjust to their, their new teaching schedules. We will be creating work sessions for our arts teachers to assist in virtual opportunities for students and professional learning for teachers who will be teaching virtually this first semester. I would like to give the board an update on childcare for our employees. We do have a working group who's been hard at work trying to grapple with that issue. We have surveyed our employees' needs for childcare, and there are many, and those numbers vary from school to school. We do plan to perhaps use support staff to assist with that childcare. It's also possible that we'll need to use community volunteers to assist us with that need. And the childcare will be at each child's school of attendance, and students will be, be able to have their lunch there at the same rate that they currently pay. We also, last week, met with community daycares. Information was shared about our reentry plan and support that we can offer daycares in our community. Each daycare received a survey to share services that they provide, which we will be developing a resource to share that information with our families. And we'll also be offering sessions for daycares on how we can help them help support students with e-learning. So that work continues, but that's the update on that. And speaking of virtual learning, I'm anxious to turn my time over to Mr. Bissel, who has done a yeoman's job of getting us ready for Lexington, Lexington One Online Learning Academy. Howard's worked very hard, and he's had some help, but he's done a great job. So I'll let him tell you about that.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Little. Excited to give you an update on Lexington One Online Learning Academy this evening. Start with an update on enrollment by grade level. Currently, we have just a little over 6,700 students who have chosen the Online Learning Academy option for, for this coming fall semester. That breakdown by grade level is about 2,900 at elementary school, 1,800 at middle school, and about 2,000 at the high school. So these numbers have grown significantly over the past weeks, and, and we've been able to repurpose some support to meet the demands of scheduling and planning for, for the same start date as our face-to-face students. So, you know, we're very fortunate to have, work with Human Resources and schools to have the support of a data specialist, assistant principals, a curriculum specialist, a counselor and administrative assistant, all coordinating with our school-based leadership on, on getting this, this program up and running.
Mr. Bissel, is there one attendance area that, like, are you seeing a pattern among attendance areas, like some attendance areas have more parents that have chosen that than others?
Yes, ma'am. The, the Whitenow attendance area kind of sticks out. Right now, I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but the Carolina Springs, Whitenow Middle feeder pattern up to Whitenow High School seems to have a significantly larger number of enrollees at this point. Some information on the scheduling details and organizational structure by grade level in the, in the academy. This scheduling process is entirely, it's very complex, it's very complicated, but we're on track to complete the largest part of it by the end of this week. At elementary schools, our goal is to schedule students with teachers from their homeschool for their core and content-related arts. And at middle schools, we've formed pods of middle schools, sister schools, if you will, to allow them to share, share resources and help us out with some of the scheduling complexities that are there. So our pods consist of Lexington Middle School and Meadow Glen Middle School in a pod, Whitenow Middle School and Carolina Springs Middle School, Gilbert Middle School and Pelearon Middle School, and then Beachwood and Pleasant Hill Middle School. And so, and within those pods, we're creating grade-level teams in our core content areas made up of both teachers and students from, from both of those schools. And we're also working through the logistics of scheduling students in advocacy sections and exploratory courses. And by creating those pods, it allows us to leverage the FTE and share some of those students, and also give students some familiar faces, hopefully, when we're able to transition back into a face-to-face environment. At our high schools, we are taking students' existing schedules as they sit in power school, and we're enrolling them in as many courses as we can based on the teachers that we have to teach them. There are a few things you have to consider when you're able, you're making a decision to offer a course online. You know, you have to have the demand by the students, you have to have the teacher to teach it, and the course has to work in an online environment, not everything transfers. In many cases, we're going to reach back out to teachers who indicated they're interested in teaching online, so we can finalize those schedules. Our students are going to receive special ed intervention, ESOL, and counseling services through their homeschools, and we anticipate that we'll have schedules finalized by early next week. It's really important to us that we're providing a high-quality option for students. This is not just a, a patch for the, for the time being. This needs to be something that's on par with, with the experience that we offer in our face-to-face classrooms. And so we are working really hard to give our teachers the support that they need to provide high-quality online instruction. Many of our teachers have been preparing for this fall all summer. We've got a robust catalog of professional learning opportunities they continue to take advantage of, and we're going to continue to offer those throughout the remainder of the summer, really, you know, all the way through the beginning of the school year, and continue to provide those opportunities for them to, to hone their craft and, and get used to what will be a, a new environment. This is going to prepare our teachers not just to use technology, not just to learn how to push the buttons or use a particular tool, but really more importantly, to show them how to structure their online teaching in a way that's going to engage students and create meaningful experiences for them that's going to keep them coming back and keep them engaged in their, in their learning. Building an online community of learners and really establishing healthy relationships with their online students is going to be a primary focus for us, for each of our teachers and each of our classes, and, and creating a, you know, a relevant experience for our students in, in that online environment. Our model in grades K-8, it's going to focus largely on a regular schedule, providing consistency and structures, but also live video conferencing with students to introduce them to new skills and concepts. It's not going to be primarily an asynchronous or a, a recorded session or a set of materials that, that are provided digitally. It's going to be an engaging experience for students on a, on a regular schedule. They're going to have opportunities to practice those things, receive consistent feedback from their teachers as they master them, and it's going to be really common for a teacher to schedule live conferencing opportunities with small groups of students based on their needs to help them along, you know, as they consider the, the data that the students are producing on their, on their learning progressions. And teacher feedback and support, it's really going to be a, a critical piece of that model. Same opportunities for high school. However, that's going to be a little more self-directed for high school. That's going to look and feel for high school students more like a traditional virtual school experience has felt for them. We have students that are taking online courses all the time, all the time at our high school levels. But we are still really going to focus on the teacher engagement, student engagement through teacher feedback and, and support. And they'll be enrolled in online courses and access a variety of instructional resources as they work with their teachers through those instructional progressions and those courses to earn high school credit. I'm, I'm happy to take questions, but first, I really have to take a moment to thank our principals, our assistant principals, and our teachers for their agility and collaboration over the past few weeks as we've shifted schedules and, and partnered to, to make this work. Also, our Human Resources team, our, our information technology team, Dr. Natalie Osborne-Smith, our instructional coordinators, and our Online Academy staff are just continuing to work long hours in service of our, our students and families. But I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any.
If I can, if I can jump in very quickly before the board asks questions. Mr. Bissel, we, we talked about this a little bit on our Together Talk. Will you explain the advantages of what makes the Online Learning Academy such a good option as opposed to other types of options that, that people may have, other type of online options?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think first and foremost, this is, this is a Lexington One program. This, this, we're featuring our teachers, we're featuring our instructional models, we're featuring our resources, and we're keeping our kids close to us. And, and then I think it's important to consider that someday, things are going to go back to normal. And, and when they do, our kids will be poised to slip back into a more normal schedule, having been a part of our, of our system and, and the things that we can provide our, our students directly.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So I've learned to repeat things. It sounds like K through 8th grade will be synchronous, and then 9th through 12th will be dis synchronous. Is that, is, is the primary model? I mean, there'll obviously be some synchrony in the 9th through 12th, correct?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Everybody's favorite vocabulary word.
Yeah, it's tough to say. Okay.
That's right.
And then, obviously, there's a lot of questions about the, the Online Academy, and obviously, tonight's taping of this session, we can steer our constituents, too. But how else are we communicating to the community what the Online Academy will look like?
So we've posted a number of resources to the Stronger Together webpage, and that's a great place to go and get some information. There's a number of different resources there that will talk parents through what a, you know, a day in the life of an online student might look like at different grade levels, different expectations for parents, especially of younger students, and, and overview of what those instructional models look like. And then, as well, as the, as a Together Talk, that, that really dug in on a number of different questions that, that have come up. At this point right now, I'm, I'm really excited to get these schedules finished, and so we can start to have some additional, more specific communication. I've had hundreds of conversations over the past few weeks, answering some very specific questions here or there about those schedules. I, I want to make sure that we have all the information right before we make it public. And so we're getting to a point very, we're very, very close to a point to where we'll be able to make some very, some more specific information available to families. Thank you.
How many students have we not heard from?
That is an excellent question. I don't have that number. We can get it for you.
Okay. Thank you.
I do know, I can tell you, at, at this point, Dr. Phillips' office has compiled the data and then has shared with schools what their data is as far as responses go, and, and schools are reaching out to make contact with those students. There's one, one school in particular I checked with the other day, they, they were still looking for a response from about 30 or 35 students.
I do have that data, if you don't mind, Howard, when I can share that with you, Board. As of July 16th, we had, we were unable to make contact with 54 students in the district.
Great.
Okay. This is Jada. I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the life of Lula? Is this something that even after this is over with, that will still remain?
Yes, ma'am. I, I feel like an online learning experience is, is really a modality that many of our parents and, and students are going to want moving forward. I think it's, it's well-established in, in, outside of K-12 education, particularly in higher ed, but in talking with, with businesses and, and industries, learning online is the way that they do their training and their professional development. And it's pretty widespread because of its efficiency and its, its ability to be personalized for, for learners. So I mean, I truly believe that that model could be an option for, for students moving forward. It may not be for, for everybody, but I think exposing students to that environment, giving them the opportunity to work and, and learn more about how to, how to manage themselves and self-regulate themselves, and be more self-directed in, in an environment like that is, is definitely doing our, our families and our students a service before they leave us in our K-12 system.
Thank you. I know you said professional development had been offered. How many teachers have taken advantage of that? I know many said that since they weren't getting paid for it, they were going to wait until their contract started. So I was just wondering, how many have taken advantage of it to this point?
Yeah, I don't have that number off the top of my head. I know that we've been maxing out some sessions over the past month. We've actually had to work with our IT department to lift the participant cap on some, on some of our Zoom meetings so that we could get, you know, closer to 400 people in there. We have people in waiting rooms after 100 people had signed up for it pretty quick. So, I mean, I think, I think it's being taken advantage of greatly. I'm sure I could get some numbers for you if you need specifics.
Okay. This may not be a question for you. As far as our virtual teachers, they'll be teaching in their classroom at their assigned school. Will they have other duties assigned to them?
No, ma'am. Really, the, the way that this is going to work best is for them to be able to focus on their, their caseload, their students that they're working with online. I know that there's the potential for that, for, for that to happen while being there in their building, and I think that's another step in a series of conversations that we, we need to have with schools and, and with teachers, and really just talk about what's going to be the, the best scenario for, for students and, and what's a, a really a brand-new environment for us when we're coming back in the fall.
Howard, just, we, we have made the decision that if they're a virtual teacher, that they will not have duties before or after school. We, we made that decision maybe day before yesterday, so we've communicated that to principals. And somehow, it got out that they were going to have to do duties as well, but that's not the case. Where their numbers, the virtual numbers, especially at the elementary school, are going to be a little bit higher than they would if they were doing face-to-face, so their responsibilities to the kids are going to be a little bit more, and that's how we offset the duties and responsibilities outside.
Okay. As far as instructional assistants, will those be pulled from the classrooms to act as subs?
From, like, in elementary, like kindergarten? Well, the kindergarten instructional assistant will be with the kindergarten teacher, and they'll be doing those jobs. One of the things we are going to have to do, and we're going to have to think through this, is part of what the model plan was for auxiliary staff, is we've got to think about, in the past, what we've done with substitutes, is high school secondary teachers could come in during their planning time and cover for a teacher that was absent if we didn't have a sub. That won't happen this coming year, because if you think about the hybrid model, the A cohort's in class face-to-face, the B cohort is going to have some, there's an expectation for that classroom teacher to have contact with that B cohort during that day, which is during their planning time. So we can't ask them to cover classes and also do that at the same time. So we've told principals they can't count on teachers, like classroom teachers, to do substituting if we don't have a substitute. So what we've got to think through is like all hands on deck. We've got to think through, who are the people in your building that could cover classes if we didn't have a substitute? Now, our goal, our hope, is that we're going to have substitutes, because typically, the reason we were short on substitutes last year is we do a lot of professional development during the school year during the day, and a lot of times, the PD substitutes really tap into our pool. So our, we're not going to be doing that, that way first semester. So our hope is that we will have a pool of substitutes, 200, 300 substitutes, that we can count on to sub for teachers when they're out. But recognize that at some point, we may have to have a last-minute sub come in, we don't have the substitute, somebody's got to cover that class. So we need to have a plan for who in our building can cover that class on that particular day. And then beyond that, and I've talked to Central Services about this today, SLT is going to look at their staff on Monday and try to identify some people that if a school got tapped where they didn't have anybody there and we needed somebody on the spot, then call, call up here, and we'll go out like we did that day when SC Ed did their thing, we went out and substituted. Well, we can do that, too. I mean, we're going to, everybody's going to be all hands on deck so we can meet the needs of kids.
Does that mean that board members can help sub as well?
Um, if you want to do that, I guess.
Yeah, I know they did on SC for Ed Day. Yeah, I think that would be fun.
Thank you. We'll tap into that.
Okay. Um, let's see here. I think a couple of the other questions I have, I'll just wait until a couple of these other reports are done. But thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Bissel?
Ms. Garris, I was just going to comment. There are some legal things with a board member subbing for pay. We can't do it for pay. And I really want to help because of the situation that all the school districts are going to be in. So I've applied to be a sub in Lexington V, just because I feel like if I'm helping one school, then I'm helping all schools. And so that's something to consider, is maybe signing up to sub in another district, and, you know, maybe encouraging some folks that you know in other districts to apply to sub in our district. There's just a whole pay for, because we're ultimately the top of the food chain, and so we can't work in the district for pay. But we can work and help in other districts. So that's an idea.
Do we have a policy that says we can't work for pay? I know teachers can't receive pay as volunteers.
It's a, it's an ethics, it's an ethical thing.
Okay. I just know during the SC for Ed Day, I know a couple of y'all subbed in the classroom. So even if it was on a volunteer basis, I mean, I wouldn't mind doing it if we allowed to volunteer as subs. I mean, I've got sub training up in the classroom. I'd be glad to go back in there.
Well, I'm sure Lexington III and Lexington V would love to have you.
Yeah.
I think that if we, if we are committed to helping, I think that we can help in other districts, and I think that's a, a big gesture, so.
All right. Thank you. Again, lots of work happening there, Mr. Bissel. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Salters, we want to talk a little bit about our, our food services, where we are, updates there, as well as some of our safety and security measures that we're going to be communicating out over the next seven to 10 days.
Thank you, Dr. Little. I'll start with safety and security. As you, you probably heard, Superintendent Spearman came out earlier, or late last week, early this week.
Thank you, Dr. Little. I'll start with safety and security. As you, you probably heard, Superintendent Spearman came out earlier, or late last week, early this week, and, and indicated that all students and staff will be wearing masks. And so we, we've been preparing for that, I guess, for a couple of months now. And so we have purchased masks for students. We've purchased masks for staff. The State Department of Education actually distributed some masks for staff as well. Cloth masks is what they, they distributed. We've got some, some very specific areas where we have high contact with some of our most fragile children, and so we have some additional protective equipment that we purchased for those staff, and we'll be rolling that out. It, you know, various desk barriers, some of the things you see here in, in this meeting room, out front in our, our receiving area. And in our schools, we've got similar plexiglass panels that are going up in the high-contact areas as we go. So a lot of that's been going on. We've purchased hand sanitizer dispensers for every classroom, some additional backup hand sanitizer for when those dispensers potentially, should they run out. We're navigating some interesting waters. The, the state fire marshal actually has some restrictions on the volume of hand sanitizer that can be stored in a building at one time. And so when you put two hundred classrooms together, a hundred and fifty classrooms together, like a large high school, and you want to put some hand sanitizer in it, you, you all of a sudden are meeting some of those thresholds. So we're negotiating some interesting waters with that. We are being very specific with our staff about hand sanitizer and about cleaners. You've heard a number of recalls probably related to hand sanitizer, so we are not encouraging staff to bring in things that they've bought off the shelf, and that's why we're committed to, to providing that, those resources for them.
Mr. Salters, we have had some questions from parents about, since the children are gonna be eating in the classroom, and they possibly would have food on their surfaces, about the contamination of these strong cleaning products, contaminating the child and the food. And so that's something we have for parents. There's a concern.
Yeah, that's obviously a consideration, and that's why we, we are providing an individual spray bottle for every classroom that is, is provide, is, is for a ready-to-use product that is food-safe, but that, that does kill bacteria. And we're making that available for teachers. We're not requiring that they use that on any certain intervals or whatever, because we're gonna be cleaning classrooms every day. But we know that some of our teachers will want more of a comfort level, and, and there's gonna be times where they need to do some additional cleaning, you know, and a staff member may not be available from the custodial services area. So we're stocking all the classrooms with those, that cleaner, additional paper towels to, to use for, for those cleaning purposes as well. You've seen a lot on electrostatic sprayers. We're gonna be using those in all of our schools for cleaning of the classrooms and other, other, you know, high-traffic areas. Basically, we're gonna have some staff dedicated to doing nothing but wiping down high-contact surfaces all day. And so those are, you know, your, your door handles, your, your bathroom fixtures, things like that. And, and so we've been doing that in this building since we came back, and, and, and that seems to be effective. And we are tuning our HVAC systems. We are, we are already under maintenance contracts where we replace filters every couple of months and, and those types of things. So, but we're, we're, you know, tuning those to, to get maximum airflow in our classrooms, working with ASHRAE standards and the CDC guidelines to, to, you know, meet those, those standards. It is a difficult balance, though. You know, a lot of things you hear about this virus is, you know, fresh air is, is good, having airflow coming through. We have operable windows in most of our facilities for safety reasons, but those operable windows are not intended to be opened on a regular basis. And so what that does is it creates, allows humidity to come into the room, can cause an air conditioner to overcool and, and, because it can't keep up with the dehumidification. And then you get, you know, things growing in there that we do not want growing in there. So it's a delicate balance with as much humidity we have in our air. So we're working through that. With, on the security side, we are going to be working with some modified drills this year for fire tornado lockdown, lockout. And we're getting some guidance from SLED and, and State Fire Marshal and others. Basically, what it looks like right now, we're gonna be able to do is review our procedures for these, these drills, and then not go through them as a whole school at one time, but individual classrooms will be able to do these things on a smaller scale, so that you don't have mass gatherings of, of students outside. But I, you know, a teacher can go over the fire drill procedures and then walk her students out or his students out, and then bring them back and another, you know, know that she can do it, so, and so forth. We're working through arrival and dismissal procedures now and movement of students. Obviously, arrival and dismissal are, are two key gathering points, and we, we're looking at some staggered movements within the building and using some electronic means to control the arrival and dismissal flow, or excuse me, mainly the dismissal flow. Arrival kinda happens naturally. But we'll have electronic communication. Essentially, you'll have someone at the entrance with a walkie-talkie. They'll say, you know, Mr. Anderson's here to pick up their child. The, the children are waiting in the classroom. That name is keyed into a spreadsheet that teachers are monitoring, and Mr. Anderson's child is then sent to the front for him to pick the child up. We've actually been using this process at several schools over the past few years, and it's been, been quite effective. So looking at rolling that out, there'll be some other processes. It's really a school-specific scenario there, but we're working through that with each school to make sure that happens. Food services has been an unbelievable challenge for, you know, for us through this pandemic. And you, you, I'm sure you're aware that, that our food service operation is a self-sustaining business. And so it, it is not, it is designed to run and operate itself and make, make a profit and support the, the employees that are a part of that. And so it, we've taken quite a hit over the last, you know, few months. There is some legislation that's being considered now to allow us to go, to continue feeding the way we are, and that's basically free for all students. But that hasn't passed yet at the federal level. But, but right now, we have plans to distribute food via carts at the elementary level. And so students will leave their classroom and get, get food from a cart that's located, you know, outside their classroom, go back in and eat at their desk. Middle and high schools will be more of a grab-and-go scenario, where they'll go to the cafeteria, grab their food, and then go to a, a designated space to eat. But we will not have, you know, large, tightly gathered groups of students eating. We also are not allowing any outside food deliveries. Over the last few years, Grubhub and Uber Eats and some of these others have become quite popular with students to, to bring, have food delivered to their offices, and we're not allowing that. And that really ties into the idea that we're, we're trying to minimize outside traffic into our buildings. And so only, you know, visitors that have a, a, you know, a bona fide reason for being in the school are gonna be allowed to come into the school this year. So we're really trying to, to focus on minimizing outside contact coming in. So we are also looking at being able to feed our virtual students. And, and so that likely will be a model where they, similar to what we're doing now, where food will be prepped, you know, a number of meals will be prepped, and they can come by the school and pick up those meals during a certain window of time throughout the day and have those for, for the course of a week. So a lot of variables going into food service, but we're, we're continuing to work through those. And I think Dr. Little, you mentioned this today, you know, it, it's really, everything we're dealing with is a moving target. You know, two weeks ago, we were not having masks for, you know, pre-K through two, and now we are. And so, you know, that's, that's what we do. We monitor and, and adjust, and we'll, we'll be doing that, I'm sure, with food service as things continue to change. Do have a little show and tell for you. This is, in front of you here is a typical pre-K through second-grade classroom table. This is some of the new furniture from the Bond referendum, and it's been rolled out of a number of our elementary schools. Traditionally, we would have four students sitting at that table. And so what we've done for these younger students, we're gonna be providing these plexiglass barriers. And much like we treat security, we're treating the PPE as a, as just a layered approach. We feel like students at, at that younger age group might have some trouble wearing masks and keeping those on all day. And so having the plexiglass dividers will just be a kind of a secondary layer of protection for the students as they sit at those tables. So those will be rolled out to our elementary schools here, here shortly. I'll be happy to answer any other questions you have.
I just want to commend the food service department. I went and helped a week before last over at Rosenwald, and my goodness, it is so much work. It is just, and those, that team, they're just so dedicated and so inspirational, and boy, so organized. They have that thing down to us, science. So I just want to commend them, and for all the deliveries and the bus drivers that have taken the food out, and the ladies that stay back and prepare everything. It's just amazing, amazing. Do we have a count of how many meals we've served?
I'll get that for you.
Yeah, share that with us, because it, it's just mind-boggling how much we've done this summer.
It's a, it's an unbelievable operation.
It is.
And they've jumped right in and basically reinvented their whole business.
Yeah, and now that they've added the produce boxes, it's just, it's unreal. So tell them thank you.
And I was gonna ask, this kind of dovetails with my questions to Dr. Tally earlier about Title I. I know there are some districts in the area that are Title I districts, like Richland One, and their food service is provided for every student in the district regardless of means. I mean, are we close to that classification as being a Title I district? I mean, I, I know this isn't the time to like lobby for that, but that just seems like something that would give us access to those, the meals for everybody, which seems in, in this particular instance, would certainly be a safer, easier way to, to provide meals.
Well, I mean, the, the thing that we're gonna be able to do is, you know, provide grab-and-go. The, the biggest benefit to what that does is it allows everybody to eat for free. And so, and, and up until this point, you know, the, the federal government has provided that during COVID. So, but for our district, I mean, we're, we're still a ways away from qualifying for something like that. But should the federal government extend this grant, which hopefully they will through the year, we, you know, it would, it would simplify things a lot for us.
Thank you.
Hey, this is Jada. I have a couple of questions. Has the grant from the USDA been approved to provide food service on the days when the children aren't scheduled to attend? I knew that was in the frequently asked questions. Y'all were waiting on a grant to be approved.
So it, we have not heard yet. We can provide meals, but right now, they're, they're gonna be paid at whatever, you know, rate the, the child is eligible for. And so we're, we're still working, waiting to hear from them.
Okay. I've gotten a few questions about the cleaners and the chemicals that are used.
Uh huh.
Where can we find that information?
I can get you some specifics on the, the cleaner and the tablets that are being used.
Okay. Thank you. Also, I'm gonna read back to what we were talking about earlier, where you said the Ethics Commission. I actually emailed them on July the twenty-second to ask about a teacher running for school board. And I asked, do they need to resign before they file? Or are they able to resign after they take the oath of office? I mean, before they take the oath of office. And she says, there's nothing in the Ethics Act that prohibits a teacher from serving on a school board. They are only requirements that they recuse themselves when issues affecting their economic interest arise.
And I actually was able, I recalled, there, we actually have two board policies, BCB and BHA, that state a board member may not receive pay as a teacher of a free public school that is located in the same school district of which that person is a trustee. So we actually have board policies that prohibit us being paid.
As a teacher, but not as a sub.
Well, I interpret that as any, as an employee of the district.
I would say a teacher is different from every other employee.
I don't, I think this just precludes any compensation.
Yeah, I think the reason being, if I can jump in on that, is because we determine the pay, and we would be our own boss, and that's just a really strange alignment.
That might actually give subs a raise. That would be a good idea. Okay. That's something to talk about. Either way, if it's just our policy that's keeping us from doing it, then that's something for us to talk about. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Salters.
Yes ma'am. And I, I did get a number on the number of meals served to this point. It's seven hundred and one thousand two hundred and fifty-six. And we have a distribution again tomorrow. That's the last one.
I'm sorry, but I'm just gonna clarify one more time. It actually, our policies, Ms. Garris, are based on a section of South Carolina Code of laws, fifty-nine dash nineteen, that prohibits board of trustees members from receiving pay in the same district on which they serve on the board. So it's a, it's a part of state law.
I know there's a state law about receiving pay as a teacher while serving on the school board. And it says teacher in state law as well. I actually probably have that somewhere.
All right. Our final presentation for the evening is Mr. Jeff Caldwell with Student Services. Not our final presentation of the evening, but as part of this particular section is our final presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Little. And let me start off with an apology for keeping my hand to my face. For some unknown reason, my mask broke moments ago, so I apparently have too much face for this mask. And so.
It's that handful of M and M's you keep.
Thank you for that. Thank you. This one breaks out, and I may just go ahead and exit stage left.
That's what I say, Mike. Can't, you can't get off that easy. We got too many questions.
Thank you. I was asked to give an update on a couple of things. I'll start with athletics. You may remember from, I think, a June presentation that I made, that the High School League is developing a three-phase process for athletic reentry. We began phase one on June the fifteenth, awaiting phase two. It's my understanding that phase three would be a back-to-normal, you know, full competitive schedule. We have not begun phase two yet, but on July twenty-third, the High School League rolled out phase one point five to begin on August the third, which was yesterday. And we have done that. We had meetings with all the high school and middle school athletic directors. The differences are minor. Basically, for the fall sports, they increased the number of participants and coaches in any one spot from ten to sixteen. They allowed some closer than six-feet drills, like a handing-off of a football or pass plays and that sort of thing, but the students have to be masked. Weightlifting can be done with spotters, but the spotters stand at the end of the bars instead of over the top of the, the participants. So just, again, very, very few changes, have no timeframe for phase two-point-oh or phase three-point-oh, but that's currently where we are with the athletic reentry. I will tell you that, that Lexington One proposed to the High School League a plan that somehow became dubbed the Lexington One Plan. It was not the Lexington, it was not the Lexington One Plan. It was a plan proposed by Lexington One. And it basically, we were requesting a flip of the athletic schedule, where the lower-risk sports like baseball and softball would be played in the fall, and the higher-risk sports, wrestling and football, would be played in, in a spring, probably in a January, a spring-one timeframe. That, that proposal was rejected. We appealed that proposal. There was an appeal held on July twenty-second, I believe, and, and after about two and a half hours, the appellate panel decided to table that decision until at or around August the tenth. That would be following a two-day training session that they're having today and tomorrow. And so we proceeded with that, but then we later withdrew that, that request. And the reason being, we felt that if this plan were approved, and we didn't know if it would be or not, but if it were approved on or around August the tenth, that was just too late in the, in the. too late in the, in the summer to ask schools across the state to change their entire athletic competition schedule and have baseball and softball and those sort of things in the fall. So we, again, have withdrawn that for the betterment of Lexington One and all school districts, because, again, we just felt like it was just too much to ask in too short a period of time. If it were June, we may have pursued it, but it being mid-August, we felt it was in everybody's best interest to withdraw that. As far as, the next thing I'll talk about is what we're calling a student safety pledge. And Mr. Salters alluded to this earlier. Dr. Molly Spearman has required that all students and staff wear masks on buses and at schools at all times. Prior to that declaration last week, we had already developed a pledge that we were planning on and still plan on having our students and parents sign for the face-to-face instruction. And basically, it is a pledge saying that if I'm coming to school face-to-face, I will adhere to certain standards, I will follow, you know, good hand sanitizing regimen, I'll stay home if I'm sick, I'll do all those things that we've been preaching all summer and all spring long about COVID-19. But the real emphasis was, is that I am pledging as a student to wear a mask at all times.
And Mr., may I interrupt for just one second, Mr. Caldwell? This was actually a suggestion brought by our own Ms. Green.
And we followed up on it immediately.
And this was one of her suggestions earlier on, and I think it's, thank you, Ms. Green.
Well, the state superintendent finally caught on and decided that it was, it was worth doing that. So realizing that we have other options for students, if they, if they don't want to wear a mask, then they could certainly, you know, be a part of the Virtual Learning Academy. We also recognize that there will be students who, for some medical reason or some behavioral reason, aren't able to wear a mask. And our remedy to that is we would refer those students to a 504 determination team or an IEP team if they already have an IEP. And then that team could decide if we need to make an accommodation for masks, meaning that they wouldn't have to wear one, or perhaps they wear a face shield instead of a mask. So, again, our thought was to start at Grade Two. The superintendent, the state superintendent has said all students, so we're looking at all of our students. And we certainly recognize that a four-year-old or a five-year-old is going to have a much more difficult time wearing a mask than a 10th grader. So we will work through those processes, and it is not our intent to make students go to a virtual environment, but certainly if they just absolutely do not want to wear a mask, and that's part of the pledge, and that is an option that will be made for them. The last thing I want to talk about is transportation. And just as a quick background, the survey results that we received recently indicated that, the survey that parents filled out where they wanted virtual, they wanted face-to-face, they also indicated whether they wanted to have transportation to school. And looking at those surveys, about 15% of the parents who responded have requested morning transportation. About 24% chose transportation for the PM, and PM is just about always greater than the AM. We usually have about 60% or more students who ride the bus each day. So our numbers were much, much lower than we anticipated, and that is a good thing. And in fact, from Howard, Mr. Biswell's presentation, the number of students who have chosen virtual education has risen since the last time I looked at these numbers. The more that go virtual, obviously, the less that ride the bus. So we're looking at a much smaller cohort of students who are going to request to ride the bus. At the same time, the, with the mask mandate that the state superintendent came up with, it also increased our capacity on the buses from just a little under 50% to about 2/3, about 66, 67%. So we have less ridership, and we now have more capability to put more students on the bus each day. So that was certainly trending in the right direction. So with that in mind, well, actually not in mind, but at the same time, we were getting the feedback from our administration about the proposed bell schedule, particularly from the middle school. So because the middle school started at nine and it ended at 4:15, and it was the latest dismissal in the district. So that was causing some, some issues and concerns with childcare, with administrative coverage, with students who may arrive on campus at seven, not start until nine, and not leave until after four. So the first thing that was asked of us is, is there any way we could have the dismissal time mirror the high schools? Instead of 4:15, make it 3:50? And we were able to accommodate that. Through more conversations and with the Childcare Working Committee began looking at their restraints and their issues around childcare, it became more and more apparent that this bell schedule was causing maybe some undue burden on some parents who, employees who needed childcare. So the question was asked, is there any way, what's the possibility of being able to have a bell schedule that doesn't necessarily mirror the way it used to mirror in what we call now a normal year? But could we, could we change it around some? So I couldn't be more proud of our Transportation Department because they immediately jumped in, and we studied the data, we looked at the riderships at all the different schools, not just district-wide. And what we've been able to do is we did not change the elementary bell schedule at all. It begins at 7:50 and ends at two, which is a little later start and a little earlier dismissal. We have been able to change the start time for the middles and high schools to 8:30. It was nine. And the dismissal time is now 3:20 instead of 3:50. So if you look back in time, historically, that's pretty close to what a regular bell schedule is like in a regular year. We purposely did not change the two o'clock dismissal. That's a little early for elementaries, but we are staggering the dismissals, and Mr. Salters alluded to that earlier. And because we're doing that and we're having to stagger the students on the bus, on the buses, we just felt like we needed that extra time, particularly this first semester, to make sure we can get those kids loaded properly and taken home before we start the middle and high routes. So, again, the bell schedules will be 8:30 to 3:20 for middle and highs, and the elementary remains the same, 7:50 to two o'clock. And I think that is all I have. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Board? Thank you. Board, let's just take a minute. I just want to take a minute and thank, finish, and I want to, I want to thank them and the teams that are working so hard on this and let us just thank everybody.
Absolutely. I just wanted to, I wanted to come back to a data point that Dr. Tally shared earlier, I believe off Dr. Guyton's question. I think, Dr. Tally, you shared a different data point that answered a different question. So I just wanted to come back. You talked about we had not met with 54 students. My, I think that number is the number from the spring that we did not engage with over the, the spring virtual learning experience. Is that correct? Because it's, it's more than 54 students that we haven't heard from as we are logging or as we're, as we're gathering data for the fall. Is that correct? I just want to, I want to clarify that.
What I was responding to was what we had to submit, Dr. Little, to the state. The students since March, we had made no, we're not able to find that.
Gotcha. Okay, so I just, I wanted to clarify that, but I think, Dr. Guyton, you may have asked a different question, and I just wanted to make sure that I was, that we answered your question.
I guess my question was more, and thank you for the information, but my question was more directed at, okay, of our 27,000 students, we've had 6,700 who have enrolled in virtual. Have all the other ones said face-to-face, or is there a cohort where we just, we don't know yet, and therefore we're going to have to default them into, you know, hybrid versus virtual?
So the answer I gave you is the wrong answer to your question, but to your question, we, we are still trying to reach out to students who've not responded. Also, we probably have students who are in power school who have withdrawn from our schools and didn't tell us. So we do have some of that. I don't have a number for you, Dr. Caldwell. And I apologize for giving the wrong answer.
Because I've been watching the numbers as it relates to transportation. The survey closed, I think, a week ago or so, and at that time, about 88% of the families had responded. So that, if I do my math correctly, that's about 3,100 students that we have not heard from.
Yeah, I like the 54 better. Let's get in the car, we can figure this out tonight.
Having, having said that, I don't know how many of those 3,100 have been, have been contacted yet, but I do know this. When the survey closed, about 6,500 families had chosen virtual. Mr. Biswell reported it, 6,700. So we know at least 200 have, and I feel certain that many more of those have been contacted. But, but we are working towards, you know, touching those families as well. I even factored in, what if all 3,100 chose to come face-to-face and chose transportation? What does that look like? And we're still in the 30% range for buses. So I even factored that in, knowing that the likelihood of that is almost impossible, but just in case, what it would look like, and we're still well under where we are. And as one other point, the 54, last count from the State Department was down to 34. So we have 34 families from this summer, or from the spring, that we have been unable to make contact with. So that's.
I'll add one more data point to get that even more confusing. Says the kindergarten and first grade numbers are unusually low, which indicates that they haven't done what they normally would do over the summer in register. So we anticipate that that could happen as soon as we open online registration and into the week or so before school. We're expecting a crush at the 5K, 4K, and grade one level.
Gotcha. Okay. And, Mr. Caldwell, to your presentation regarding student services, student safety, those kind of things, you know, I think one of the things we haven't really discussed or talked about, and I just pulled the data from, this is from DSS's website. The week of March 16th through March 22nd, the Child Protective Services, the intakes were down 46%. That was first week. 44%, 55%, 33%, 46%. I mean, these numbers range anywhere from, from 40 to 55%. And so, you know, I think while we can all agree that any plan we come up with is not going to be ideal or, you know, absolute, our schools are our number-one safety measure for children, and the data clearly points to that. And so I certainly appreciate, you know, what all, everyone has put into this. It's, it's definitely been a labor of love and hardship and sacrifice across the board. So, I mean, that's, those are big numbers. Those are important numbers to remember. So, you know, that's, that's kind of the backbone, I guess, to, to a lot of this. So thank you.
I'd like to thank you for including the pledge, the mask and social distancing pledge, because to Dr. Guyton's point, school is so important, and we want to be back face-to-face, and we want all of our students back in the building and our teachers to be well and healthy. And that's going to take all of us working together, and that includes the students working with us and the parents working with us, because we're not going to accomplish this if we're not all committed to taking care of each other. Dr. Little has hit that time and time again. And this is a time for us to, you know, lead with humility and sign the pledge and model the behavior for our children and model the behavior, the correct behavior for our neighbors, because this face-to-face back-to-school thing is only going to work if we do it the right way and do it together. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Stacy, just to memorialize, again, if you choose the 100% virtual option, your access to Lexington One after-school activities is not inhibited or prohibited in any way, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, let, I want to, I just want to thank all of you, and I especially, I know there's, this just a, this is just the tip of the iceberg, and the iceberg is huge. And it, I think one of the main components is our teachers, and going back to, they're taking the, they're getting ready this summer. They're all doing the professional development, and the bus drivers, the cafeteria people, everybody, the custodians are getting ready. So Board, I just think we should just thank them. This, this meeting normally, I can tell you, because I've been on the board a long time, this board meeting usually lasts about 17 minutes on a typical year, and we definitely don't discuss percentages of kids wearing masks in buses. I mean, I've never heard that discussion until this year. So I just want to thank all of you for all the hard work, and Mr. Biswell for taking on a role that's just brand-new and leading the way. So thank y'all all for leading the way.
Okay. I do have another question. I was waiting to see if it got answered. I got a call on the way here from a special ed teacher, and they got a call today that everything was kind of being flip-flopped around, and that the virtual students and the regular ed students, the AABB students, they're all going to be kind of put together in a pool, and then teachers are going to have to figure out amongst themselves how to divvy those students up. Do we know anything about that?
I can respond to that. Today, Ms., Dr. Baylow had a meeting with special educators, Ms. Garris. What we're trying to do is still look at our schedules, and many of our special education parents want their children who are going virtual to have the same teacher they've had in the past. So what we're trying to do is look at our numbers, and we're trying to, we're working with HR to determine if, if in fact, special ed teachers could have a caseload of students and teach them virtually and keep those same students. So we haven't, we haven't finalized that. We're just in the throes of making, making those decisions at the moment. We haven't made any final decisions.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, Dr. Little, is there anything else you want to add to that category before we move to 10.3?
No, Madam Chair. Thank you for your patience, for the amount of information we have tonight, and we will provide the Board another update on the 18th.
Great. Can we get some of this in writing as well? Like the reports that were given tonight?
Will certainly.
Yeah, I mean, but I don't, I mean, I took down some numbers and stuff, but it'd also be good if we shared this with the community. I mean, these are like very good numbers that we had, good data.
We are sharing, I think, a number of this. I'm going to turn that over to Mary Beth Hill.
And we just weren't given anything besides the agenda before the board meeting. So that was, I mean, I've been sitting up here trying to write as fast as I could.
So Ms. Garris, much of this information is on our Stronger Together website or will be shortly. In addition, remember, we're videotaping this, and so any of the public can watch this at any time. It's out there for them to watch, re-watch, which many of them do evidently. So that's also helpful information. If there's something, though, you'd like, let us know, and we'll get it for you. But we are making every effort to make sure, in fact, there's a tweet scheduled for first seven o'clock in the morning, because we figured nine o'clock at night was a little too late, actually a text message. So we've been tweeting from here, but we are, I have a text message scheduled to go out first thing tomorrow morning to give the link to the new schedule so that people can see their elementary, middle, and high schedule. We thought that too important to go out tonight and perhaps get lost, so we're texting that out first thing in the morning at 7:00 a.m.
I just know some students don't have internet access, and I know some that have hotspots and.
You're exactly right.
Yeah, limited data, so they can't sit here and watch, you know, a meeting for an hour and a half just to get little tidbits of information. Thank you.
That's exactly why we've started texting some of this, because we're getting some of that information.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. That is the end of my.